Good morning to the Brookfield Selectmen's Meeting of February 20th, 2018. If you would like to raise and join me and send your questions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first thing here on the agenda, I would like to approve the expense warrant of $212.18 for $136,132.98.
You have a motion to approve.
Okay, is that the all in favor? All right, now this is, the next one is to approve selectmen's minutes of 1:23:18. It's an executive board session, but I have a motion.
You have a motion to approve?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, this is to approve minutes reports from other departments. We have the Brookfield Fire Department from January 2018 and the Recreation Department minutes from 1:11:18.
You have that motion.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye. And I would like to say on the, I'd like to, on the Fire Department, I would, well, we have two anniversaries and I would like to congratulate them. It's firefighter Daniel Driscoll with nine years of service to the community and firefighter David Merle with seven years, and I want to thank him for the service of the town.
Excellent, thank you. I see none.
See none.
Did you want to speak under public access?
Yeah, anything, sure, okay. Don't be bashful.
I know I've hit you with like, I don't know how many emails recently because a lot of stuff's been coming up, but one thing that's big is the tax title. And last week I suggested that we should all sit down, everybody that has a piece of it, everybody from my department, the Water Department, the Collective, Board of Health, I mean, I think it's a group thing. There's over a million dollars out there right now. It's a number that we shouldn't let get any bigger. So I would suggest that we should be saying if we're, if four or five parcels are added every year, we should target, try to get four or five off there. The, and ultimately try to get that number down. We're not going to collect all million dollars because some of the, you could have a parcel that's worth $10,000, but owes $50,000 in bad taxes, obviously we're never going to get it, but I think it's misleading for the general public when they look. And can you hear me okay over there, Beth?
I can hear you great.
Okay.
But basically you've got, got a problem with the sound.
So I would just, I think it's something we need to do. I don't know who drives it, but I, it hasn't, we haven't had an auction in quite a while, but I think it's time to take some of these properties back and if nothing else, get them back on the tax rolls. But going forward, we get a little more revenue coming in.
No, it starts with, it starts with Brenda because she has to advertise them in the paper and then after she advertises them, then it comes over to the treasurer's office.
Correct, and I think some of that has been done, but I don't think we know.
Well, what happened, I think, with some of it, someone had done some work for Sandy quite a while back and a lot of, and then KP looked it over, a lot of work had been done along, and so she had to take and have it redone again. And then she had went to see there was some kind of a real estate company who would buy the tax titles and try to sell them.
That's an alternative.
Yeah, that's, that was an alternative to do.
Well, will they buy the properties or they'll buy the tax title? Which means that ultimately they have like a lien on that property.
Yeah, that's what it is, yeah, they buy, they take the tax title and set them up.
Right, so, so just a quick note, so something that came in when they reviewed the properties that we had in the population, they really were only willing to purchase like one or two of the properties. And what, we need probably to take a look at a couple of different steps, and one, do we have any properties besides the campground that have gone all the way through the process and through land court and that we own? I don't know if we've ever done an auction or, like, at least in recent memory, of any of the properties that made it all the way through the process. So we need to, so I don't know if you have visibility on those as well as what part of the process is through tax titles?
Well, I, well, I remember years ago, we did have an auction on a property, but then the owner had, a friend of the owners came up and he bid on the property, he bought it, and I can't remember, I can't remember any tax auctions at all. It's been a long time since we've had any of those at all.
It's my recommendation, and we did this probably 18 months ago. We did have a selectmen's meeting at one point where we received a letter from KP and we received a similar document that we had that lists this million dollars. We did, we did sit down for a very few minutes at a selectmen's meeting and talked about it, but we didn't talk, you know, take it further. Personally, where I was heart with that, is that probably a third of that million dollars comes from two properties, campground being one of them. We in fact, for the campground specifically, we actually have one parcel that is yet to be taken, and so that's in the, in the process. So, so the campground being one big chunk, we've got the C, uh, Community Block Grant now that's looking towards the Finney thing to see what we can do, what next steps and whatnot. So again, in those two properties, we took a big chunk out of what the million dollars is. What I would think would be important, and again, I would suggest if we could have a roundtable and just have that as a topic, I think it would be the who bus, because what I'd like to do is to see if we could put a spreadsheet together. Okay, those were two properties, we did take action, contrary to popular belief, we did take actions, and in the case of the campground, we still have to take a further action to resolve what the next steps will be with that. And again, none of those actions unfortunately, in the case of the campground, I would suggest, though we can always talk about it, that that property will never come back. And so given, given that, it was $274,000, Alan, and again, this is a number that's in the, in my head.
It's not on the list now.
Yeah.
It's not part of that million dollar.
Okay, all right, then I feel better about that, okay, okay. So, so again, what I would suggest is if we could have a roundtable on this, during the day, sometime, where we just focus on what other, what's that list, current list, my apologies for thinking campground was still there, and have a spreadsheet to say, KP owns these, we own this, the treasurer owns, the accountant owns, whatever, and that we then can understand what those next steps are per property. Or at least, or at least the big, the big ones.
I think it might be a good idea to get together about quarterly to do that, so that then everybody kind of knows what's in their lane and what priority works.
This is the newest one?
Yeah.
Did you get the newest one?
Right, yeah. The only one on, yeah, the very first one is B.A., I believe.
Yeah.
And that's that strip of land that's adjacent to Hobbs, but I don't believe any of you. The only other one that is, Five Hobbs, I believe, is on there. About halfway down.
Should be B.A.
Nope, it's not, it's a different name, it's, because it's alphabetical.
Yes, yes, I know who you mean.
It's an old trailer that sits there, and there's somebody in it.
Oh, that one, okay, that's outside the campground.
Yep.
Yep, okay.
It's on the right.
I know, I know what you, yep.
And that's kind of what kicked us off, because somebody came in and said, can I buy it? And I want to put a garage on it. And I said, well, let's find out what we have to do, and so I think that's one that is probably, the town is probably due more for the value is.
You said it was another parcel, where'd you find that out?
Uh, about halfway down, Five Hobbs Avenue.
Is that on the?
Five D seven.
I got five D, oh, okay, it was right here.
Yep.
Five D seven. No, that's it, that's 71, oh, five D, I'm sorry.
Five D is all the North Pond.
Okay, all right.
So that's one that, you know, that's how it started when we talked about that.
Well, that's, like I said, I'd love to have a spreadsheet that says the next action, the next action, so the world, and who owns that action.
And to take that one step farther, I would like to see a word document that says, from the fact, from here, where they're paying taxes, everything's fine, they stop paying taxes, what needs to be done, by who, and at what point, so that in the future we can be smoother in the, in this whole operation.
Well, again, we had a false start with the idea of the Attorney General's Program as well, and that took us several months to decide that the town didn't want us to go down that path, unfortunately. So again, it's, it would be very important to have one document that allows us with the words behind it, so that we can understand who owns it, what's the next action, what's the timing, so that at least we can be, I mean, we don't need a meeting to look at the spreadsheet to say, hey, this is due now.
Absolutely, and if we did that on a quarterly, and we did have a, a financial meeting at one point, and if that's going to be a quarterly thing, maybe this is part of that financial team meeting.
I think maybe that we, I think all of us should try to attend, because he, the first one, I think we all should have a date to attend this test.
I agree, more than any.
Yeah.
So let's call it as a selectmen's meeting, and just, that's the only agenda topic and...
And mornings, I think, everybody's here in the morning, so it just is easy to have everybody come in at the morning.
Yeah, needs to be.
Sure, absolutely, yep.
Beth, do you have a date what would be good for you, maybe to set this meeting?
Uh, yes, usually, usually Thursday mornings are best for me, right now. I can, you know, usually I can make a Tuesday or Wednesday, but right now Thursday is actually best, not this coming one, but the Friday Thursday, I can definitely.
What is that date on?
And earlier is better for me, if it's a Thursday.
Yes, Thursday is March.
You want to do 9:00, 5:00, 5:00, 5:00.
March 1st, ah, March 1st isn't good for me.
Oh, it's not?
No, and I'd like to be here.
We could do, we could do Wednesday, Wednesday.
What's the next week?
The next one is the 8th.
March 8?
But that, we could do, we could do Thursday, could we do Thursday, the, the 9th?
I think it's 8.
That's the 8th, but that's, we're going to do something, Karen, on the 8th?
Um, during the day.
Yeah, during the day, we're going to do something.
It might be the 6th, I'll check up, I don't know.
I'm pretty sure, I don't know, but we want to maybe go into Thursday.
You don't want to, you don't want to add it to the selectmen's meeting on the 6th? Because you're going to set your meeting dates and have it timed to the 6th.
That's a meeting date. We want to.
Yeah, it, March 8th is the next, and you guys got something, so 15.
If we needed to do Tuesday, Tuesday, the 6th is an afternoon meeting, I could also do that.
But we're meeting, you're meeting that night.
We're meeting in the evening.
Yeah, we're meeting in the evening, well, how about, um, let's see, what else can we do here?
The 15?
15.
In the morning?
How about next Tuesday then during the day? I guess to push the thought any farther, if we, if we do it in the afternoon, I could probably do next Tuesday.
That would be the 27th.
Yeah.
Are we meeting at night?
No.
Okay.
You're not meeting at, no, we're going to set the meetings today and hopefully 6.
Okay, Tuesday, 27th sounds good.
Okay.
At what, at what time?
Uh, would this be okay with everybody?
No?
Yeah.
You might, I'll make anything work.
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, that's going to be the topic we're going to focus on.
That's it. Yeah, that sounds good, that's all we'll focus, like you said, is tax title, and we're not going to take anything else. Okay, now...
Who will send out like an invitation?
Karen.
Karen, do you want to write down everybody that probably should be involved?
And now, if we're mentioning names, should we do an executive session?
Uh, portions of it would be executive session and portions of it might, so what you may want to do is meet about the open meeting portion first and then move to executive?
Yeah, the strategy on documenting.
Because I don't think you can bring up these different names, Karen, even how much they owe.
A regular meeting and an executive session.
That's what we can.
Well, the goal reason the names are public record, actually, it's just, if we're going to talk about strategy from a standpoint of support cases, that's where we follow the executive.
And that's where, and that's really what we're going to be doing, it's one, it's going to be the logistic lead, that we want to have a meeting quarterly, that we want to have a spreadsheet with annotations as to who's got responsibility, and then, we would then go into our executive session to go one by one down through these things.
Yes, we have to.
Yep.
It's important.
And there's like a dozen of them that are related to the court.
Mm-hmm.
That's another document we should make sure we have. The KP, the latest KP letter.
So Karen, in addition to the people...
I have treasure tax collector board, a selectman assessor board, a health, anybody else?
Accountant.
Accountant, yeah.
Water department.
You feel the water's important too?
It's something that, it came up in that, you know, they, a lot of these properties are, have a relation to them.
Well, don't they have, isn't there a lien on the tax bill, no, not on the tax, isn't there a lien with water, there used to be?
Right, but if you're discussing a particular parcel as to whether or not they're back, is the water still turned on or off, is anybody living there?
Because if the water's turned off, it becomes a border health issue that is not happening.
Right, and that's where we went, that's where the border health.
But do you have though, I know years ago they used to put water liens on the tax bills, is that there anymore on people that owe tax?
That would be, that would come under Brenda, I wouldn't see the...
Okay.
And I believe that's also true.
Yeah, that's what I believe is also true.
I think Keith would be valuable too.
Oh, yeah, well, ask Keith then, too.
And you had Kerry on that, right?
We have Kerry, and we have Lonnie, we have everybody else.
Uh, yeah, that probably does it, I mean, if it, I don't think you need building inspector or importers owning or anything.
I don't think we need a building inspector.
Probably not, but we didn't communicate with them once we've got, kind of like what the next step actions are.
Yeah, no, I think that's great, and I think to come up with a strategy on how to do it, and then we can go right through the list and say, you know, which ones warrant action sooner rather than later, so.
That's good, all right, so we'll, we'll finally meet them.
Okay, Linda, Marith, I appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Yep, thanks. Super.
All right, we're working on here, I would like to vote to ratify the Chapter 90 reimbursement signatures.
You have that motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now these are, these are special use permits again, for the lake, there's only one, and this is for, to use the Quay Bob pond on 6/24/18, and it's for the Friday night best group.
Motion to approve.
Beth?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that'll be one that you'll need to sign if you can get in.
Yep, I'll put in the P. N.
Okay, now we have a resignation here, this is from Deana Laduke. I confirm I no longer wish to be on the Historical Commission, so please remove me from the board.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that, and I hate to see, you know, people that have been on these boards, I mean, they do a very good job, and we have to take, we have to take this, and maybe Karen can get a letter out in the air for her? Okay, and now we have an appointment. To the Board of Selectmen, for Donald Faginow, and it's a Historical Commission vacancy. I am writing to request that I be considered for appointment to a vacancy that currently exists on the Historical Commission. I previously served on the Commission and most recently served on the Quay Bob 300th Anniversary Group. Thank you for your time and consideration. I think this is an excellent person to be on the Historical Commission, so I would like to make a motion to appoint Donald Faginow to the Historical Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have his right here. He said it by Clarence to sign it, but should it be Beth?
Oh, okay.
Okay, here's another request for him. Okay, this comes from the Agricultural Commission. They would, they would like to request permission to hold a tractor parade in conjunction with the Garden Club's plant sale on Saturday, May 26th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The parade route would go around the common. And that's from Cindy Thompson. I don't have any problem with that at all.
Worked out well last year.
It worked out good, so I'd like a motion.
And you have that motion.
Beth?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we want to set some dates for our selectmen's meeting. All right, how about 3/6, 3/20, 4/3, and 4/17?
That works, some of our evening days are evening meetings?
Yeah, those are all evening meetings. The only time that something comes up, Beth, you know, like something had come up last week, this is why we wanted to do it in the morning.
Understood.
Okay.
And most, and most weeks I probably could have made it work, it just couldn't happen today.
Oh, okay, all right, now...
You said 4, you said 4/3 and 17, right?
Yeah, 4, yeah, 4/3.
Yeah, we need, we don't want to forget about the 2/27 daytime meeting as well.
Oh, yeah, I have it, I have it marked up here. And then we've got our two, I mean, in between times, I don't know if I have any of those meetings, I don't have a advisory board that's progressing, but we need to get together with them also. And then we also have to set some dates to open up the warrants. Paulson, do we want to do that on the next meeting, probably?
Excellent.
Yeah, we're going to wait and see, we're waiting to hear from the Advisory Committee anyways.
Okay, all righty, and the next one here is to sign the CMRPC invoices for services rendered. This is a quarterly, they bill us quarterly, and the amount due is $7,897.32, so I'd like permission to sign that.
Motion to...
Yeah, it has to be signed all by all three, I'm sorry.
Motion to sign.
And I'll get it there at the meeting and sign.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Again, this is managing the $800,000.
The next thing on the agenda is others, and I have something to bring up here. This came in from Larry Van Cott. We've been having, and I know personally, we've been having a lot of problems with the phone systems up here, and the phone systems are almost 20 years old, and so they were, Larry's been trying to get somebody to come in and work on them, but nobody will work on them because they're not familiar with the program and they don't want any to pay at the system. So Larry went out and he got us one quote, but I know we would need more quotes. This is from Accutec Communications in Sudbury, Mass. And they would, their hourly, what is, an hourly labor of would be installation of voicemails and 16 telephones, complete with programming of the system voicemail, parks below, we need mounting kits, user lines, port voicemail, and digital telephones, we need all different kinds of lines, everything that comes in with this, and we have a two-year warranty on it, and 100% of the equipment price is due upon quote acceptance. And then the remainder of the bill is due net, probably 15 days, and wiring is not included, the client must have it pre-wired, and the cost for this with a, with tax is $9,231.25. And I think we should probably go out and try to get some more quotes, because this is, it's needed very badly because we haven't been able, been problems now for a couple of weeks, isn't it Karen?
Yes, I think all the calls are coming here, to this office.
Yeah, all the calls are coming into Karen, and a lot of times you call the town hall, it just rings and rings, and another time, somebody else called the other day and Mike picked up. So we do need to look into this, I think it's a, you know, it's a necessity right now.
A quick question, it's, so you said, and I have read that quote, but it's in 15 lines, and I think currently, oh, okay, that's right, we have, we have actions 11 through like 17 or 18, so that should be more than sufficient actually.
Yeah.
That's great.
So we should probably...
And actually, under the, under the procurement laws, I mean, we, we could get this on the warrant coming, and under the procurement laws, it's still low, but if we, we can, we can bid it up some more, but it's not a requirement to, to at least consider it, I don't think.
We, we can get three quotes.
Yeah, we'll get three quotes on this, but one of the nice things though is, I mean, I don't, it's in Sudbury, Mass, so I don't know how far away that is, but at least I'm here in Massachusetts, where a lot of times you get these companies bidding from out of town, you know, out of the state.
Yeah, they're, they're about an hour from us, so it's not terrible.
Okay, so we can, we'll probably try and get this and then maybe get this up and going, and then decide, you know, where we're going to get the money to take care of it, because we have to get this.
I'll do a request for quotes.
Karen will do a request.
And then we'll see what we get in in time for time.
All right, Karen, thank you.
Great.
Okay, does anybody have anything else under other to bring up this morning?
I have a question.
Sure, just for point of information, back in the deep dark ages, it was mentioned that we have a special town meeting, is that still on, or are we going to go straight to the annual meeting?
Well, we'll probably have a special, a special part of the same night as the town meeting.
Okay, but not a separate one?
No, not a separate one.
Okay, I'm planning, or just trying to plan their activities around that, so.
Makes sense.
Yeah, we'll just, you know, closes off all last minute things on account, that's what we'll do.
Just one, one other, other, on, on Tuesday the 27th, at 6:30 in Town Hall, we have the next dialogue meeting on the open space recreation plan.
What is that?
February 27th, and there's two more, one in March, March 3rd, on a Saturday morning next door at the church to have people who are commuters to join, and then on 3/14, as a part of the egg meeting, we'll actually have the last meeting, and, and people are encouraged to attend any of these meetings.
And that's on open space, okay.
Yep, thank you.
All right, now we have, we'll move on to correspondence. Uh, this is from, this is the State Budget Hearings, this is the Joint Committee on Ways and Means to Schedule statewide budgetary, and this is from Aunt Goby, she says, I enclose a copy of the full schedule, all hearings are open to public, if you'd like me to read them. On Monday, February, well, February 26th at UMass Old Chapel in Amherst, Mass, March 19th at the Wigan Auditorium, Peabody City Hall, 24 Lowell Street in Peabody, Mass, Friday, March 2nd at the Goddard Charlemagne and the Media Arts Center Building 1 in Roxbury Community College in Boston, and the other one is Monday, the 12th at the Connector Room in Berkshire Community College, Fifth Field, Mass, and March 13th at the Everett High School Library at 100 Allen Street, Everett, Wednesday, the March 14th at the State House in Gardner, and that's it. If anybody would like to attend those. All right, now this is another one.
Just stating that they're interested in acquiring Cooley Hill Audubon?
Oh, all right, Mass, this is from Mass Audubon, it came, and Mass Audubon is interested in acquiring the property to consolidate ownership at Elm Hill Farm Wildlife Sanctuary. Should be acceptable terms, such as sale, be agreed to the parties. Okay, that's from Audubon, but didn't we have another one?
Yeah, you have something from the, from the dam.
From the dam safety.
It's the, it's right, keep going, right. One more.
One more.
Two more, right with the clippers, with the big clippers, yeah.
Okay.
We did get an extension.
Okay, then we also have an extension on the Cooley Hill Reservoir Dam that's in Offbrook Field that we own, and it's a per year request, an extension of time has been granted through May 27th, 2018, to perform the dam safety phase one inspection for completion and submittal to the report to comply with the order. Ken, do you have anything to add to that?
I just love that my child will get it from Ty and Bond, did a thorough investigation of the thing.
And that's attached, she has it attached.
Oh, she had the pictures, she had the pictures.
It was the last inspection, yeah.
Yeah.
So I already saw that before, that was an old one.
So the real question, you're going to have a meeting with dam safety as to...
Trying to.
Yep, and so given that meeting, we'll understand, but my reading, kind of, the report, was that there was some holes that need to be filled in, some trees to be removed, but that that would be a requirement to... But that that would be a requirement to be able to do the next, to do what they're asking. So at least if we were to do that, then that would avoid anything in short term until we could get the requirements.
Maybe.
Okay.
Brenda, do you?
I have a very quick question. Do you mind if I put in to have FedEx put a drop box, I mean UPS have a drop box in front of the town hall? I think we've talked about that before. But it saves me a trip from going to East Brookfield.
I don't have any problem with that.
They're not big. We don't need to do anything, we don't need to pay anything.
Sometimes they have envelopes. Will we have an envelope if somebody wants to do it? Send out one from here?
I don't, I think you can get them from the post office. But I have no idea, honestly. I just always have, usually they send it to you and then you send it back. But normally I have to either call them or drop it off.
I had to send one out to somebody and I'm pretty sure from the send it had an envelope in the side.
Oh, yeah, they, I have no idea, honestly.
Oh, no, I don't have any problem with that at all. Beth, you, you don't have a problem with that either?
I didn't hear what you said, if you could repeat that?
It's a drop box to go up front so that UPS can drop stuff off for us.
Oh, that would be great.
Yeah, that's great, okay. Thank you. You're welcome, all again.
They cut one over there in the truck stop and they have envelopes inside.
Now, we'd like to go into executive board session under, session six. Session six, they could consider the purchase, exchange and lease or value of real estate.
No, it's number two.
Whoa, you have.
No, look, executive session number two.
Oh, okay, I read the wrong one because you had six there at the bottom. I'm sorry, two. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions on contract negotiations with non-using personnel. I would like to have a motion to go into.
Motion to go into executive session under example two.
Okay, Beth?
Okay.
Uh, Lincoln and I?
Saturday night.
Saturday night.
Okay, and then we will also adjourn at 10:31 for regular session and then to go back into regular session to close up the meeting.
Do adjourn.
Do adjourn.
Sounds like a plan.